Welcome everyone. We will call the meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer, pledge of allegiance, followed by the roll call. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the freedom to meet. We ask for your blessings for our community. We ask for wisdom in our decision making this evening. Thank you for the freedoms that we have been allowed to enjoy. Thank you for those that serve and protect us in our country. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mike Barth for running the meeting while I was gone last time.
Good job.
I heard he did a great job.
Yep.
You might want to replace me.
No.
[laughing]. May we have the roll call please?
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Here.
Ridgeway?
Present.
Jones?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Here.
Thank you. You have the March 19th regular council meeting minutes in your packet. As George Cherry would say, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
Can I make a motion?
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep. You have in your packet the approved bills list that I assume you all had a chance to look over and...
I had a question. Admin towel dispensers, Yander Supply Company, $600.
Those are no-touch as opposed to the push or the push kind? No, we didn't get the no-touch. We got the no-touch so that we don't have to have little bottles in the bathroom, little soft soaps and whatnot. And they've been received well?
I'm just kind of curious how they charge you for the dispensers because...
Usually you'd think they don't, yeah.
All the stuff I've gotten, ever gotten out of school, I've never paid it for a dispenser. Even when they break, I get new dispensers for free.
Well, we didn't want...
As long as I buy the product from them to put it in it, they give me free dispensers of anything, paper towel, toilet paper, soap. Why we spent $600 on dispensers, I was kind of curious.
I can ask him why he charges for those.
Yeah. Who would know that you should expect them free? Why did we get them anyways?
Well, the old ones, we were using, you know, like bottles like this, soft soap, not to give them a plug, but now these are mounted on the wall just like the paper towels themselves. So it just looks better, it's cleaner, it's more hygienic. You don't have to touch it. People aren't touching it that don't wash their hands and hopefully they don't spread germs, so... How many did that buy? We've got pretty much all of our buildings. Now, we haven't totally retrofitted this building yet. There's been some discussion about Letitia who does these here replacing the bottles. So that's next on the agenda, but we've got the garage all done, the PD. We also with that, that price doesn't include just soap dispensers. That includes, oh Cheryl might know exactly what it's all, paper towels, toilet paper, garbage bags. That's, was all on that invoice, so. There's probably a dozen or so. Like I said, that wasn't the whole, that wasn't the cost of that whole. They weren't, they weren't $60 apiece, right.
For my part, I was surprised to see $2,000 in police uniforms on the last, at the last council meeting and $1,000 in police uniforms roughly on this one. And the chief's gone for a couple of weeks to a meeting. I talked to Craig about it today and it's a question he couldn't exactly answer other than he said, you know, we have new officers that need fitting, this and that. I was wondering if they were changing their uniforms or what, that we were getting so much, but I guess we'll have to wait and find out when the police chief gets back unless someone else here knows.
I understand that we're getting, the uniforms all have your personal name embroidered in them, is that, that's how yours is? And shouldn't we not do that? That way we could hand the clothes down because we do have a turnover.
That was a choice that the chief made. We have had some uniforms in the past with their names and the board of companies been able to remove those and put a different name on them. Done that with a couple of jackets, they've taken the old name off, put a new name in. Somebody right now is wearing Chief Ballinger's old jacket because they were able to remove the gold and everything and put it with silver, so.
It's good.
I got one question there and I don't care about the $23, but I'm curious, what is a Jellyblade?
I wondered the same thing. I wondered...
I thought I was well versed with Jellyblade, true.
Straight to state highway, it's charged you, H&amp;W Jellyblade.
I could find out. It's Easter jelly beans.
Yeah. They spelled beans wrong.
I thought it was supposed to be beans.
Yeah, it might be a typo.
Jellyblade, those squeegees they use to dry the cars and the vehicles off when, after you wash them, it keeps the towels from getting real nasty, so you take, it's basically a squeegee that wipes all the water off. It actually works really well. We were using towels, we started using a California blade, which is the same thing and it saves the towels and everything. It actually saves a lot of work.
So you squeegee a car off, is that what you're saying?
Squeegee off, the whole car off.
Oh. I guess you have one Jim. Cheryl pointed out there's a couple of things on here that didn't have purchase orders on that she...
Was that Taylor Jazz?
Was not happy about. Momar for $1,800 and then on the front Bob Aaron for $50.
Final PO. That was just a miscommunication. Bob was supposed to just give us a quote between a used and a new and somehow a used one showed up and we got billed for it. Momar was our usual park herbicide spraying that we buy every year and they had a discount. If you bought six five-gallon drums, by March 31st I think it was, you got like a 20% discount. So we took advantage of that and I didn't get a PO from Cheryl before the invoice got here, so I got one that day.
What about the police tourist? This has oil change, Rosebud Garage and et cetera.
Et cetera.
That's an et cetera, that's an expensive oil change.
Better be a lot of et cetera.
I only have so much room.
I have to go back and look at the record to keep them out so the PD, I have had a floor leak that they fixed and then the one seatbelt was bad and they ordered a seatbelt from Chip Ford and they gave us the wrong one and the wire broke again until our airbag light was on. So they replaced the seatbelt for nothing for us. God, it's got us right seatbelt.
Appreciate you guys being here to answer our questions.
Hey, if nobody else has anything, let's pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call please. What did I miss? You're looking at me.
The park restroom I put on the desk tonight.
Oh.
It's approved maybe.
So this is the bill that was submitted for the park restrooms. Is that a quarter of the...
25%.
So you need it added to the approved bills list.
No, it's on there.
It's on the list.
It doesn't matter. Just so it's not slipped through.
Oh, okay, all right.
Make sure everybody knows that they're approving it.
I'll pick early on the itemized that it actually adds up to 17.5.
Yeah.
I'm seeing $13,420.50. If you add up all the items.
Well, we better back the bus up.
So you totaled all these, and I did not, I...
650 times four, three times 600, 35 times $13, 50 times $4 and well, I got $13,420.50.
Cut.
Or is it just 25% of the bid? That's what he, he's strictly percent of the bid, not itemized, that's the way I read it.
As I say, he doesn't actually have the amounts listed.
Right.
Is that how the contract was set up?
I have no idea.
25% drop?
Yeah.
But that's how he come up with the 17.5.
Upon substantial completion, 50%, something like that. I've got it written down, got it in the contract book.
Do we have a legal contract with him?
Mm-hmm. Through MBA.
Is that one out there that's hanging up, what you call it, legal?
That was the notice to commence. I was told to put the date I wanted into it. Basically, if you read it, if you read the contract, there's no date for a notice to commence from MBA. And I went round and round with Andy Welch on this and I said, this doesn't seem right, it doesn't seem legal. And he said, you can put any date you want and the language is in there and if you read the contract, the language specifically states that you can choose any available date or today's date if you wish for your notice to commence. And I said, but you haven't signed it, I haven't signed it, there's no seal. I was really uncomfortable with it.
So is there something that we're missing and we need to do?
I don't know, but this whole project I've been very uncomfortable with.
Cheryl, did you tell me that there was a formal notice commence form online?
It's Ohio Revised Code.
The Ohio Revised Code.
It's right in the code, the form is.
So is that what you need to get and get signed by everybody rather than what's out there? We got one out.
Well, and they'll need to put their engineer's seal on it too.
Well...
Well, and that triggers a lot of things for like lien purposes and if some sub, I don't know how many subcontractors or whatever he might be using or people he's getting material from, he doesn't pay them or whatever and they gotta make a right to make a lien against the public funds.
Well, that's another thing there.
Back and they gotta provide like notices of furnishing and things like that, all triggered to that date.
I'm sure things have changed since I was a contractor, but when I did prevailing wage or any type of grant money things, you had to do a per unit price on everything that you did and...
You had to match it to the contract.
You had to prove before you could, you could get paid, you had to prove that you had paid, like if you, say you've installed 4,000 block when Midwest was listed as your block supplier, you gotta prove that you paid them. Either during or at the end of the project, you have to prove they're paid before you can be final paid. I don't think we have a contract that covers anything like that.
I don't think the South, the horseshoe was either, was it? Or same with East Cornelia, we had issues with the contractor there and the engineer about paying them.
I don't know, but it was always, isn't it that way still yet Troy?
Yeah, they're supposed to have a contract, I mean the prevailing wage part I never really looked at, but the contract should specify, I mean it's based on a bid and the bids are required, you know, when you open them to say, here's what I charge for this, here's what I charge for this.
Your price.
Yeah. How many per you...
But also protecting the suppliers.
Right. Yeah, I mean the whole, the notice of commencement and all that, the whole purpose of that is to protect the suppliers and so that everybody knows who's the contractor, who's the, you know, the public authority, how to contact people if you need to contact them.
I think we really...
What about the bond? There's no bond either, I was real uncomfortable with that.
Yep.
And I know it's local and it's a small project, small being 80,000 or whatever, but still...
Isn't it require a bond always required on one of our projects?
There was no bond required in the contract.
Well, that's our fault.
Yeah, it should have been.
Should have been on prevailing wage.
On any public job.
Yeah, we've always requested a bond.
Performance bond.
I'm okay with paying this. I mean, I know they had, they already have all the plumbing, rough in, all approved by the inspector and everything, so I know they got other money tied into it, but...
Supposed to be pouring a slab Thursday or Friday this week.
I know Bellows is down there, he said he got everything state approved for the rough in.
Yeah, we had all the lines marked today for taps.
Yeah, I'm not supposed to pay it, I just think we need to get a production order.
Right.
Jim, I would like you to make, or not make an effort, but get that proper...
The notice.
Notice to proceed, filled out correctly and signed off and...
I'm not sure there's, I'm just looking at it right now, I'm not sure there's a requirement that everybody sign off on it. There is a requirement about what has to be listed in it though.
That's what Andy, Andy Welch was telling me.
The only thing it has to show is what the project is, who awarded the bid and then the administrator signs it and then it gets...
The date the public authority first executed the contract with the contract.
But those things can't be canceled.
Well, it says that, doesn't it?
No, so don't be taken care of before you ever sign the contract.
Name and address of the surety for each principal contractor.
And usually the contract will have that paperwork right in there. The actual contract will have that notice.
Yeah, so we need to cause that to be prepared.
And it wasn't in there.
Name and address of the representative of the public authority about and service shall be made and that's the, that's the concept of it is because if there's a subcontractor or a supplier that's not being paid, their lien rights are tied to providing a notice of furnishing to the village so that we know before we pay him, hey, he hadn't paid, you know, Joe Smith that he got his concrete from or got whatever, so that we can make sure that they get it all settled up before we're distributing out any money and then later getting sued or whatever on the public funds.
Before we disperse the funding or become the key of the lawsuit.
Right.
Right. But I'll still say pay the bills.
I'll still second that.
And I'll still say, roll call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Thank you. The park board met March 14th. The meeting minutes that are in the packet say January 17th, however, I think that's an error because I was just at the park board meeting and my, my name says that I'm on there, so we'll say those are the March 14th park meetings. Does anyone have any questions or comments about those? The topic was brought up just since it came to my mind that so far there's no one that's been found to do the summer lunch program for NOCAC at Hicksville and the park board didn't have anybody to do it either, so since, you know, we got the cable channel here, if there's anyone out there that's interested in running the, the summer lunch program, please call Susan Mack or me.
Was it a clever guy looking for things to do around the village? That'd be a nice thing to have him do.
I don't think he has a time during the day like that to be that...
No, that's very long time.
He has no time in the evenings, I mean that's all day during the day when he's working.
That's a paid position, but it's, it's about a two, three, four hour day. To me, the structure of the salary compared to the amount that we give them for, they get the food from the hospital, they gotta go down, pick it up, bring it back and they do activities with the kids. I think we offer them, is it?
$1,500?
No.
Oh, it's 900 for the salary and 1,500 for the supplies.
1,100 for the salary.
The money, the money that is put in the budget was always for the summer playground program, which was activities for the elementary school kids at the park and it used to be a really super great program. That's what that wage was for. And then we had $1,500 in the budget for supplies and materials for that parks program so that they had, you paid for activities, you paid for bus drivers if they got to go on a trip to Fort Wayne, to the zoo or whatever, but once the food program started and combined with the summer playground program, that person kind of took the wage and then they did a few crafts in the corner. And so that's where the wages and the supplies and materials, $1,500 comes in. When I was at the park board meeting and they asked, or they mentioned, you know, how much this person gets paid, I kind of, you know, didn't say anything because I thought maybe somebody knew something different about a wage.
Somebody mentioned it because it's listed.
Yeah, I seen it in the summer.
But that's not the amount in the budget unless the park program actually budgeted that much money. I mean even our wages are set by ordinance, so...
I think it's one of the wages for the park program, if I remember right.
But anyway, going on, probably talked about that long enough. So then we'll go to the council committee reports. I guess the police and fire committee met March 26th and would someone like to have anything to report on that meeting?
We met last Monday to go over the new software that Bruce Silkott, EMS chief, was going into and he's also looking at spreadsheet since 2010, kind of backtracking, looking to make sure all the bills that were sent out were collected or I guess tried to collect. And he was brought in a lot of numbers to us on what was collected and what wasn't. There's still a lot of uncollected money from EMS runs and not sure whether or not some of the bills got sent out, not sure people know that they owe. And so we were talking about how far back do you go to try to get your money back and also, you know, some of this can be turned into insurance companies to, you know, for their, their share too. And, you know, you can only go back, he said, to six years, so by the time he goes through everything, you're looking at 2,012, you could go back. The most, most of it, a big chunk of it was from 2015 on to present and that's every since, I guess the village had the EMS department start taking over the billing portion of it and that's when they noticed the highest number of unclaimed money being collected. So the committee had talked about going back to 2015. This will create a lot of extra work for Mr. Silkott, a lot of work going back into, in there looking at bills, find out possibly if there's any, any of these members that could have been deceased. I mean if we didn't think it'd be, a family member would be happy if they got a bill, you know, from five years ago, six years ago on somebody that passed away, you know, I wouldn't be happy if I got something like that. So Bruce is gonna go through and look at a lot of bills and we're gonna talk to Troy about setting up...
Bruce and I spoke late last week about that and actually I worked on it today, so I should have something for you probably tomorrow. My secretary was making some changes to it, but just a generic letter that he can put his name on and send out that tries to not be confrontational or anything, but basically says we've been reviewing that because it's my understanding, you know, because of the way the records were or whatever, we want to make sure that, you know, people know that they owe, some of them it sounds like don't know that they owe. You know, there might even be some people that claim that their insurance or they paid and they might be able to prove it. And so the other thing is there may be, I think what Bruce suggested to me is depending on their situation and their incomes, there may be some of them that were required to write off or not collect if they're not a certain level of the...
Poverty level.
Poverty level. And so we wouldn't know that information until they got in touch with us and could supply the information. And so it's just kind of a general letter that asks them to contact us and talk to them about, you know, the, the balance that shows on their account and we'll just have to, you know, it is gonna be a lot of work for me, just gonna have to treat them on a case by case basis, you know, somebody comes in and says, well, you know, I don't have the money to pay it, you might have to get the information from them to, to see whether they qualify or not, or if they come in and said, hey, I already paid this, you know, back in 2015, here's a canceled check or something, we gotta check that out and see why it didn't get posted or whatever, so...
That's very possible and we talked about that too.
It might be so, yeah.
And, you know, we're not trying to turn over anyone to collections and we talked about that extensively, you know?
Well, the other issue is because...
Payment plan or something, you know, where somebody can...
Because we handle those other townships and the way we handle those, we've been paid by the townships for those, but part of our agreement with them is that we'll send out their bills and any money that we collect on their behalf, we'll forward on to them. So that's another thing he's got to work with is, you know, if it's money that was, you know, something that was billed out for one of the township customers that we've already been paid by the township on, that's got to be collected and as soon as it's collected, sent on. So, I mean, that's another reason, I mean, we're not theoretically not just talking about only our money.
Right.
It's a big deal, the meeting, talking about that and, you know, trying to treat case by case and trying to come up with something feasible for people that do owe and don't have the money to pay it all upfront or don't have insurance to be able to make payments. And there's gonna be some people are gonna get a letter and they're gonna have proof to show that they did pay and we didn't have a record of it, so. There are some years ahead of that, 2010 to 2000, through 2014 that, you know, we, we only want to go back so far, the committee did, we didn't know what the council's thoughts were on it. There was some, some write-off that, you know, starting with a new program, a new EMS chief would like to kind of clear up the books and try to get paid some of it back. We know we're not never gonna get 100% of it paid back, there is 11,000 and some non-transport since 2012, 11,440 if I remember right, from non-transport. It showed up and $110 fee that they never moved anyone, so they, people didn't pay it, so. That was a big portion of it, but then we also talked about possible salary increase for the EMS chief and also first responder program and looking into that, some more. And then the fire chief brought up a little sore subject possibly on the ladder truck. It was currently in the park at that time and I'm not sure if you had a chance to get, got it back to the station. And there was gonna look about getting estimate to get it to, what it would cost to get it fixed, it was only going in reverse, so. Didn't know what council's thoughts were on getting it fixed or what do we do with it, so.
Which one's the ladder truck?
The last one we just got.
The 1984 one or 83?
Oh.
Come on Ron.
I knew that was...
I was thinking of one with ladders hanging on it.
The ladder's still good on it.
I'd back that in your other shit.
Thank you for your report. Are there any other committee reports that anyone would like to report on tonight?
I would have a question for you. Addressed to the water service and garbage and full council will remember, several meetings ago, we discussed changing things uptown. I think we all agreed to it. We did one major thing that's not good and we didn't vote on. The only way to make it law is if we vote on it. And you're looking confused like you're not following. That was to, if you have...
Change one thing.
Abjoining properties.
Right.
Combined, then you go down to one meter. If you have tenants above, you provide your own garbage, we won't force you into a trailer can. Is there anything else Mike? I think those were the two main objects.
Two things. What I talked to, after we talked about it commanding and then we talked to our council, right now currently, that's the way with the base fees, that's the way we currently do it. So if you had a duplex house and changed it into a single dwelling and the owner came and said, hey, it's single now, they would change it, the base fee to that. And that's what we did with Joyce. And coming to that, we found some other businesses that exist uptown that no, they weren't even getting any base fees. I started, we started thinking about other things that popped up, so that brought us some more basic revenue, but not, you know, customers that were using that system.
So in other words, that part of it doesn't need to be changed.
Dog doing that now.
It just needed to be applied to Joyce.
Sure.
Other people were already being treated.
We've had apartments do that, there were some other businesses do that, I believe. I think the Brick House, people that took over two units combined it into one, so I did call Joyce and say, hey, that's gonna get changed. I didn't think that was already part of the ordinance with base rates and units.
She didn't know anything about the refuse though?
No, the garbage. We did talk to, we have contract with Warler, talked to Michelle over there and she was gonna check with that. They do, do that with any other town, they all always collect residential garbage cans. It would be a contract change, I believe, to go in there and, and I know we have like two entities that would maybe use that garbage or not use garbage service. When I talked to Michelle also, you know, if a business wanted to do a separate contract with Warler, they could and get the small receptacles, but Michelle basically said, you have a contract with us for so many units for this year, if you need to change that, then we need to sit down and talk about it because that's what we're kind of basing our...
Well, and I don't think we should look at protecting ourselves, I think we should look at protecting citizens and I don't steal his job or anything, but that's commercial property. We have an ordinance that says we will not touch a commercial property for refuse pickup.
And we discussed that, I talked to Troy about it, you know, I called him and said, you know...
Well, if that's the argument every duplex in town, we shouldn't be collecting from, I don't think you want to go there.
Those are moneymakers, but they're not listed as commercial property.
You're talking about what it's zoned, what it's zoned everything to do with how the garbage is collected, it's what type of...
No, 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 that's not what the laws, what our stuff says, if, if... If you are a commercial property, we won't pick your garbage up. Do we pick up anybody's garbage on the bottom floor of downtown?
Shouldn't.
Then we shouldn't upstairs, because it's zoned the exact same way.
They based that on Werler, they based that on number of houses that had a water meter for billing, and any, up to a triplex for apartments, all had trash pickup. That's what we agreed on.
Remember, we changed.
We've never talked about commercial.
We changed their contract to make it consistent with our ordinance. Remember, I think ours said triplex, theirs said.
Duplex.
Fourplex. I think we made the contract fit what our ordinance said. Because that was one, that was one of the changes that we put into their contract. Plus adding that they pick up downtown and all that stuff, the, our village receptacles.
I understand we don't pick up downtown.
No, no, no. Our village receptacles, we added that in there. They're supposed to, they're supposed to be getting that stuff.
They don't. He picks it up.
Well, there's your.
Why don't they?
There's your catch there. We can change our downtown thing.
It's hard to put those concrete things in that arm that comes out and picks it up.
I thought we were supposed to collect them and take them somewhere specific, and then they were gonna pick them all up at one location.
We take them to a Werler dumpster. And they do pick that up down at the tin shed, but we're finding out that we're running out of room, so we're looking at other places to take it. And the park recently got a bigger drop-off. We may utilize that, but when there's track meets down there and, you know, events, even just regular busy weekend ballgames, that dumpster might need every bit of space it has, so.
The park pays for their own stuff, how can we take our city's garbage down there?
Threes are supposed to be free. That was something that was overlooked in the contract. Werler's dumpsters to the village were all supposed to be free. As part of the contract.
I do remember that.
I remember. We had the other two from the other company down at the park, and they said, "Why are we paying somebody else to collect their garbage?"
That's when, yeah.
Werler can.
Because Real or, one of the, one of the other ones was down there.
That never got ironed out as far as three dumpsters at the park, because we still had Werlers and Real.
Real waste.
Yeah.
Maybe something changed in the six months I've been going. The dumpster is supposed to be, well, I think it's at the sewer plant. This is only supposed to be for the downtown cans. So if other people are using it, it's.
Well, we take, we take PD there and the garage, and that trash too.
Why can't PD, and I'm not picking on PD, but why can't PD put out the cans if you're saying the city hall?
That's, that's a good question. I don't know why they never were. And I was told that we've never picked up out there and.
Well, we have to. They've picked up out there forever.
Well, the.
Truck in.
The other thing is, what you were saying about the downtown cans, we could put our Mighty Tities or whatever they're called out. But some of these places, they generate so much trash, it's gonna put us in a position like some of the homeowners are in that aren't used to just four bags.
No, I guess, like, the fire department's regular trash, they can put out their Mighty Tities. City Hall's got one. Our shop's supposed to have one.
Yeah, we've been picking up, fire department and EMTs.
The businesses aren't supposed to be hauling their trash out to containers.
No, we thought about that before I left, that they would supply a free dumpster if we handled the downtown.
Yeah, but Werler's supposed to pick up PD, fire department.
Yeah, if they send their cans out.
Yeah.
We were told different when I, I was checking on them before they took over, they said, "Just leave a can out back," because I didn't know where to set it. If I was supposed to bring it up here or set it up front, they said, "Just leave it set there, the city boys will pick them up."
Who said that?
I don't remember where it came from.
There was a lot of unsettled, there was a lot of question marks when it first started still, that weren't.
We still got three more years.
Yeah.
We've got bugs to work through.
It's been three months, you know?
Right.
I'm not getting too excited about it, but I didn't realize we were still gonna have to pick up the downtown receptacles.
I remember that.
Okay, that was in the contract.
Yeah, we were supposed to pick them up and then take them somewhere for them.
Right, and we have been doing that.
But the businesses aren't hauling their trash out to those cans, are they?
No, no.
That you know of.
That we know of, right.
Yeah, can you get the PD of Werlers?
Yeah.
And then they can, you guys have?
They had.
No, they say they don't have one.
We don't have Werler's can, we still have the old, the old green ones that we had before.
There was two delivered from day one, but I'll get with Bailey and make sure, if everybody's on the same page, that we're doing this consistently.
To deliver where? To the PD.
To the PD.
You can take out your own.
And then put them on their stop.
We wheel it out to the back garage.
Yeah. Right. But if you put it in the Mighty Tidy, you can put it out, and they, I would assume they would put that on their, we could notify Werler and put that on your run and add you guys to the run. But as far as like Kent was saying on the park, there was a different vendor out there, and the comment was made, "Why are we paying, why is the park paying this vendor when Werler offered to put one out there for free?" So that switch was made.
Like I said, I talked to Michelle, she said she would come back and, I, we're five months into this garbage collection recycling kind of program, you know, there's still things that need ironing. I would like to see the fire department probably get a small dumpster when they do their bigger.
You know, there's just a few times a year that, the last breakfast we had, our pickup was full.
Yeah.
And the boys came down Monday and took care of it. I don't know where all they put it, but.
Michelle said she could have addressed those issues. I know with the, like I said, the commercial property and the.
I thought our guys, this village was out of the garbage business when they got Werler.
The only thing we were picking up was downtown.
Right. With mini dumper pickup, we're not using the garbage truck, obviously. Yeah.
The car's parked there.
The cement and stuff. Do we want Michelle to come in and address any of these kind of issues we have currently with it, or do you wish you would?
I think we need to resolve it.
I think Mike Bailey would be the place to start, because he's got, he's been in charge.
I talked to Mike too about the downtown residential, kind of the apartments and.
He kind of took care of the whole thing from the beginning, from the way I understood it when I came in, was he was the point man on it. So anytime I get correspondence, I'd give it to him and.
Ron, did I understand that you would like an official motion for the, the, I don't know if I should call it changes to the downtown.
Right.
Water sewer, the water service and refuse pickup.
Do we need it, Troy?
The water service, it sounds like we don't, and that's not part of the form, I mean, that's the, the way it's being applied by the department, and it sounds like she's doing it the way Ron wants it done.
Okay.
But we don't need anything official in our records? Do we need anything? You just went to school.
It's in our policy.
It's already in our rates.
It's already in our policy.
It's just the way.
And I did it even when I was over there. Because that's when two brothers combined. Oh, well, it was some brothers back then. It was a Mexican restaurant. But the trash is a different story.
The trash is a different story.
It is a different story.
So are we gonna?
We would, well, like I said, to me, it's an address of being commercial property downtown, and also be considered residential with the apartments. Me personally, Ron, and I'm talking to me personally, I don't have a problem if they don't want, you know, downtown pickup. I went to bat for some people, businesses down years ago, because they had a dumpster and they were just using their dumpster.
Mike, didn't we come to determine that we'll leave it up to the business owners whether they want to pick up or not?
We kind of talked about that in our minutes.
I thought that's what we talked about, leave it to the business owners.
But then when I talked to Michelle, she said that, that's not how it's written in your contract.
I'm not sure it specifies. I don't remember off the top of my head.
The number with Werlers was gonna fluctuate every month because of the snowbirds and all this and that.
Sure, right, right.
People moving away and emptying houses and that.
That's how many Don tells her, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, so that's not the same number every month. That seems a little weird.
So then we could make it an official, that if you are in that business block with people living in a commercial building, you can do whatever you want to with your garbage.
I wouldn't label it that way.
No way.
I just tried. I hate to be technical, but you might want to be more specific than that. Well, I'd say you could clearly just exempt out the downtown district, you know, any units that people are living in between, I'm gonna.
Main and Maple.
Main and Maple, right, yeah. High Street between Main and Maple.
Leave it to responsibility to business owner.
Yeah.
If they want garbage pickup, it's less expensive to run it through the city and have Werler do it through us than to hire it on their themselves.
But a lot of them already have a dumpster.
Some do, but not all of them, right.
Well, then, what do I need to do that we can take a vote that says they can do?
Troy, do you need to bring legislation for council to vote on for that?
Do we need to vote to have you bring legislation?
You never have to vote. I mean, one of you can ask me to bring legislation.
Would you bring legislation back that would allow us to have?
I'm trying to make sure we need it, is what I'm thinking. But yeah, I mean, one person can ask to bring legislation. Remember, somebody wanted a.
I didn't come to talk. I'm kind of rusty, and it's been six months. I don't read the ordinance book every day we get used to. But we still got the old trash ordinance in effect, so you guys need to get that cleaned up on these days. You might want to read through the policy for three or two apartments or, because that's gonna, if it's a one apartment unit, they're gonna have village trash pickup.
Now, it's in the ordinance, right.
And that's what we're talking about, changing downtown.
So yes, I'll, I will look at it and bring whatever legislation is appropriate.
To clean up the entire refuse ordinance.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Does that satisfy?
Well, I guess.
And also, are you still doing your little survey on, remember, we had to put on the water bill for them to bring their, what do you guys call them? Garbage cans back?
Oh, I was going to ask you that.
Yeah. And I said, "Let's give them this, give them a couple of weeks after the water bill, let them read up. And if you don't start taking your Mighty Tidy back, we're gonna have to make an ordinance and fine you for leaving them set out there all week long."
Oh, jeez.
I have, I have two, I have two neighbors that those dumpsters are still in the exact same spot. But I went over to them today, this morning, I took pictures of all this stuff. Dipped them back, and the grass was all.
Where they've been sitting.
Or they've been, they've been sitting there since the day they were delivered.
Ron's got a list.
They just walk out the front door, there's a mattress laying there, there's a refrigerator sitting there. My neighbor's gone to hell.
So he had asked me, what, he asked me a month ago to do that, and I said, "Just put it on the water bill and give them a chance, you know, get, get them used to it." Did it get on it? It's, well, we just got the water bill. Oh, okay.
Should we, we gotta give them a. That we want to put a note on the vote right now, if we want to put a note on the water bills that if you, that you, it was, it was in one of the papers from Werler that they could be there from seven in the morning to seven at night. And we didn't suggest which night, so that's kind of became a problem for people. Put a note on there, have Don put a note on the water bill, you know, we need to, we're looking a little trashy here in town, we need to get these dumpsters out of the front yard and back in the back of the house.
We did that, she, she put that on.
She did.
I thought it said in there that it had to be the morning of, the trash, the morning of your trash pickup.
Correct.
And you put it out at 7:00 AM, not just any day.
Talking about taking them back.
I'll tell you.
Some people are just leaving them.
People put them the night ahead of time. I'm one of them too.
Yeah.
There must be a.
Yeah, me too.
There must be a special pickup gonna happen, because there is just jumps it out.
No.
Have you been around?
See, no general pickups, no more general pickups. I guess a lot of them is just renters moved out.
That's what two of them were, I see.
Yeah, it's terrible.
So.
I know from experience, another town went.
I'm not making the choice.
And those things will sit all week, they'll sit out there all week. Some people will pull them in to put their garbage in, then they'll put them out again, and they'll sit there all week again.
My neighbors, they just let them sit.
They take the bag out to the can and throw it in there.
Yeah, I think that's what they're.
Yeah, be prepared for that.
That's in your court, it's a warning. Committee, committee? Yeah. Okay. I think we'll give them a couple more weeks.
Ron, all it says right now is, "All single dwellings and multifamily dwellings housing three or fewer units in the village are required to have refuse service collection by the village." So it says, "Single dwellings and multifamily dwellings."
That's true, but.
It doesn't specify residential or commercial property.
That's right.
It's on commercial property.
Bless you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we're gonna go on.
He's gonna bring Brad's legislation, right?
The committee's gonna consider. I'm getting, I feel we should give them a couple more weeks. Some time, give them some time, and, and then if we can't get a grip on it, we'll have to enforce the penalty for leaving your garbage can out at the street.
Well, that's in November.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's March, April.
I'm being nice. Well, we're, yeah, I mean, you are being nice, and you're, I don't know, we, those people are, not that we should have to give them a warning, but I'm. When you have to make an ordinance on something. I'm not opposed to sending them a letter or something if they have to. But, all righty, well, we will go on to the.
Well, I got a sewer, I got a.
Okay.
Water sewer met before council night, and of course, I couldn't prep up the minutes in that quick a time, but we got some things we need to address. Just real cap, highlighting some of the main things that are happening. The Defiance Lift Station is having major, major problems, and that is a project that was in phase two, but farther down the road in phase two. Jeff and Austin's been working on it, on twice. They had a company come up and look at the pumps, and they said they're shot, the electrical box in the unit's shot. We'd like to move that up and get it fixed as soon as possible, because twice last week, you pulled it.
Pulled pumps twice last week. In the last six months, we've probably pulled those pumps 20 times.
That's too many.
Five times in March. Five times in March, so.
You finding junk in them?
Rags. And we checked every commercial business, we checked every business we can out that direction, we cannot find where those rags are coming from. The same thing every time we pull them out, the water rags.
They're like the fibrous white chop rags you buy in a box.
But we can't, we don't know where they're, we've checked every business out there between
But we can't, we don't know where they're, we've checked every business out there, between Gemini, we've checked all businesses, and cannot find where, where they're coming from.
But the system's pretty much shot down there.
It's the same, everything, electrical panel is, I mean, I can put money into the electrical panel to nurse it by, but I don't want to waste the village's money. You know, to put something in and have it tore back out again when they have to redo it in Phase Two.
Well, what are you gonna do if you put in the good stuff, and they come in for Phase Two and go, hey, can't use this fuse box, you can't use those pumps, you're gonna have to have this, this, and this?
Well, that's what we're doing, we want to do, basically move up Defiance Lift Station. Still do the same things required in Phase Two, we just want to do it early.
Early.
With the EPA provision.
Yeah, we would still get it engineered and have EPA give us their blessing.
Engineer like it's supposed to be approved through, and just move it up instead of-
Just move the timeline.
I think it's the end of Phase Two, we want to move it up sooner, and just get it done and over with, and-
Yeah, it won't last that long.
Instead of putting money into it, then have to turn around later and do the same thing over again on the electrical.
Because the whole system needs replaced, so, and he's addressed this a couple of times in committee meeting. But I think it's something we need to get done, it's not budgeted for this year, but I think it needs something that needs to be looked at this year.
Diane's famous words when she sat there, where are you gonna get the money?
Where?
Well, we don't know a cost yet.
True.
So I think that's the place to start, is to get a cost and find out how much we're talking about. Are we talking about 25, 30, 100,000? I think that's the place to start.
Isn't that what this quote's for?
That was for-
It doesn't include labor.
It's gonna be 100, yeah.
Then it's not a good-
But what you need to do is check with Andy Gull, and see what kind of flow numbers and all this stuff that they want this new plant to meet, before you have an engineer do anything.
Right.
Then you're not going to have the engineer designing it, but yeah, I can see you put money in, and then five years from now, you gotta rip it all out, put even more in. Because I, I thought at the time, you're looking at having to blow over the bottom, and do a bunch of other stuff, so it's not gonna be a cheap-
Well, I mean, it's gonna be raised, the pumps are gonna be raised.
Yeah, if we raise it up. It's still gonna be a cost, though. We, we're thinking the pipes in the bottom, hope they'll be all right, and we won't need to replace them, but you never know until-
Well, I hear a bunch of different numbers, Ron, so I think we need to find out the cost before we figure out how much money we need.
It's something you can't, it breaks a withdrawal.
Yeah.
And we need to get those rags out of the system, whoever's not handling their rags responsibly.
Andy Gull, though, from EPA is supposed to come up on, we're asking him to come up April 19th.
April 19th, yeah.
Something we can show him, Chicago Avenue separation, we want him to look at that, because we're still trying to finalize the Phase, move that to Phase Two. But again, they want engineering designs and what we're doing and how we're doing.
Yeah, and Kent made a good point, their numbers always change, so between now and six months, the flow numbers could change based on other factors, so we'll want flow numbers, you know, from a relative point in time, and not just whatever it says right now, because I'm sure there's probably some numbers in there that they expect us to reach. But that Phase Two was written, how many years ago, I mean?
Is the flow being monitored now?
Yeah, we have flow monitors on-
We're paying for it.
OG, Ogen, and Ogen and that one, and a couple others.
CSOs have monitoring.
Okay.
And I gotta report that monthly if we have, if we have a CSO, I gotta report that monthly.
That's from UUS.
What I hear Kent say is, we need to find out what goal they want us to meet.
That's gonna hinder all the whole flow numbers, this could be way off. They might be unrealistic for what's real world situation, but that's what you're gonna have to work around, to work with.
So you think we could have Andy take a look at both Chicago and then take a look and show them what we're doing Defiance? While he's in town that day?
I guess way to go.
Yep, I'm not done yet, I got more, need more money. There is a water asset management plan that the EPA is asking that our water department has done by October 1st. It's not, it's quote in the books yet, but it's something that's coming. They want certain classifications and plans for the water department, and also, it's coming along down the road for the sanitary department also. There's engineering firms that will come and help you do that. Make that plan, but also, RCAP does it, and I've spoken to Roberta. They also will offer a GIS system, we've talked about that for years, trying to get our infrastructure more pinpointed through a GIS system. RCAP does that also, they said they will work with us closer with having our people do some of the preliminary legwork and getting some information around to help them finalize those two plans. The water asset management plan is gonna cost 20 grand, but that's high side, if we can get them to a lot of numbers and do some of the preliminary work ahead of time, that that cost will come down. The GIS system that we think we need and could use to be beneficial for down the road also is 22,000, I guess that's also a high side. Again, engineering firms offer this, but I think RCAP's gonna work with us a lot closer in giving us some ideas of what we can do on a local level, help reduce that cost for both those plans.
Is the engineering plugged into those two numbers that it tells 42,000?
Engineering? No.
But what's that, what's that 20 and 22,000 dollars give us?
That's what RCAP, that's the whole plan to give back to EPA, says we're compliant now, because they're making us do it. It's gotta be done by October 1st, and it makes us compliant with EPA.
Kent had it in the budget.
I said engineers offer help, help cities do it too. I want to kind of stay away from the engineering side and have RCAP-
And they won't charge us, or-
Well, they charge, yeah, this is RCAP's, right.
Very little.
Yeah.
I think RCAP's gonna do us a better job.
They was treating us well.
Yes, so, again, 20, 22, I think we definitely need to take a look at that. And Roberta said she'd be more than happy to come up and give us the whole spiel on both the programs, she'd been very knowledgeable with our city in what we need to have done. Last thing I had real quick was talking about the VAC truck. Again, with the numbers of thinking to get it replaced. Committee really didn't make any major decisions tonight, but we were looking at the numbers that, from our old VAC trucks, 24 years old. We've owned it for about 14 years, we still don't have final, we gotta take it somewhere to get dismantled and have all kinds of costs and finding out what the major problems are with it, so we can't get a ballpark on a bid to fix the thing. We have a ballpark, but again, they looked at numbers, used, used VAC and, and jet trucks run anywhere between 125 to 150,000 at the 10-year-old truck. And you can basically get a used truck again. New and, new run about 320, and a lease program, again, was probably 349, I think.
This one was 337, if you want to pass it for a lease.
Does anybody, certainly I would think that when that truck was purchased, that there would have been a file made for it, and the start hours on the unit would have been placed, and what the hours are now? And that would, I would find it very intriguing to see how many hours we've put on that truck in 14, 15 years.
I can, I can get you that, I know where, I'll be able to file.
Because I'm gonna guarantee it's very, very limited hours. And, and if you figured the hours up and divided into what you're paying for the truck, and then you could get the maintenance insurance and everything else, we could hire an awful lot of that sort of work done. I was talking to a couple of dinner people today, you know, we've got that problem out there. Down from Schmidt on West High. You know, in the good old days, and to me, it's still the most effective thing to do, if we have sewer that was shut down from roots, now when the roots get in there and shut her down, they've also busted the tile out, so you run a root cutter through there, if you can get through, you run a root cutter through there, you're still gonna jump tile. Why don't we, instead of trying to buy a $330,000 truck, why don't we look at, let's dig it up and replace the bad section? I mean, it's gonna, it's not gonna be bad, but it will be expensive, that's a deep sewer. But dig the thing up and replace it with plastic in the whole section that is completely, I mean, that thing is bad.
Well, and I, I've watched the cameras go down some streets, Hick Street, I've watched them go down Arthur Street. I'm amazed it looks like a forest down there. And our system is so old, Ron, I think we'll be doing nothing but replacing and replacing and replacing. By the time you're done, you might as well put a new storm and or sanitary line in there separated, that area, just, just from what I've seen.
Well, I always point out, and here again, they sound like a negative Nellie, but I'm gonna bring it up because you guys made the decision. And this probably goes back two years, when we were talking about Chicago Avenue and finalizing Antwerp. It was suggested that we started Catholic Church, run a new line out, call it the Sailor's Market next to the wood. And nobody wanted to do it because they thought it was gonna be too deep and a thing to dig and cost too much. It was cheaper two years ago, adding it into the project we did versus all other stuff we've done, but-
I hear what you're saying, but we're still looking at if we were to separate Chicago Avenue and rerun a new line down High Street to the Antwerp connection, that would take a lot more water out of the system.
Yeah, you just added a ton of money to your cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think you would have had to have done anything on Chicago necessarily. If you had put a new storm in on High, then you would have helped shell tears up from it, and it's stupid. There again, I, at this point, you do whatever you want, but you're just adding more and more money.
Right.
Then we're back to where you're getting the money. I'm a taxpayer now, so I-
True.
No, no, I can just ask where you get all the money for certain stuff.
You were a taxpayer before.
Well, yeah.
Well, did you get some kind of special?
And I hear what you're saying, but when we're talking to engineers, you know, taking a look at that, you know, instead of doing a pond on Chicago, basically, we're talking about separating Chicago, getting away from the pond. But we need an engineer to verify our numbers to go that direction, instead of pulling more water out of the system directly. But anything we can take more and more water out of the system is gonna help our, hopefully, long-term goal of not putting in that rapid treatment system in the end, it was back then $3 million, and it could be who knows how much now, so. Or when it comes to that point, to put that kind of system in.
I think it's, the only other thing, I hate to, I won't mention a company by name, that sized everything for Antwerp Drive, they supposedly sized it so you could do that extension along High Street.
Right.
I don't know if they sized it for adding more in, whether it's Chicago or Arthur or whatever. But I can find an add of how much-
How much Chicago was gonna go back and over the creek?
Run all down Catholic Church.
Well, depending on which, which one you're talking about.
Well.
What we're talking about is we want to run through Chicago Avenue the way we're doing it now, we want to run through Westwood out that direction.
The storm.
If it's a storm, but if, if that's not feasible, and they say we can't do that, where are we gonna take it? Do we go, do we go up to High Street and go to, go right in front of the BD, or do we go to the Catholic Church and, you know, tie it in to Antwerp Drive? That's something that-
You're doing all that, you're just, you're just hoping that it all evaporates before it gets there. That's a long run for it. If you run over to the creek, in that, don't we, we've already got a 24 goes over there, don't we?
See, that's where they're arguing, they're saying that 24 inch will not handle Chicago Avenue. That's what we're trying to get-
I know.
To refute, that's what we're trying to get to refute that, is what we're talking about, trying to do, that would be the easiest-
I, uh-
Simple math will tell you whether it works or not.
Well, yeah.
He claimed, Adam Borries claimed he did that, and I guess then he quit, I think.
He's got all that 28 acres.
His, his exact words in the long-term control plan state, "It is unlikely that the 24-inch tile can support these 28 acres." And when you look at the 28 acres, it's like, it's not 28 acres, you, you can see the delineation of the breakoff when you look at the topography. Some of it goes down to the ditch, some of it goes that way.
He's got all that 28 acres draining into Chicago Avenue.
So now, he's got us-
We're trying to show Andy that.
Yeah, we're trying to show Andy that to change the control plan, so they will modify our permit. Because the problem is, now we have to get another engineer to go against what another engineer said. And that's, that's, it's gotta be done before October 1st. So there's, there's, it's gotta be done, you know, to meet the timeline, because Chicago Avenue's still in Phase One.
Jim has been diligently trying to get EPA to be okay with, because he doesn't have a PE behind his name, to say, hey, trust me, it's not all draining into that.
They've sent them maps, topos.
They will not go with it?
I just, they won't listen.
We have a topography map of this town, don't we?
Yeah. Well, the committee decided today, we're gonna use either the county engineer or soil and water engineer, and ask them to come out and look at it and shoot some elevations, and then they'll have the PE behind his name, and hopefully EPA will say, oh, okay. I guess they were wrong.
That creek is on ditch maintenance, so they'd already have a topography map of watershed for that field.
I don't think that back, that's on South Gordon though, isn't it? Part back there, and they're trying, it's supposed to be going on the ditch maintenance.
It's already there.
South Fork, South Fork Gordon Creek. But anyway-
Well, you're too young to remember when, when Moon come through there and cleaned all that.
If I may, this wasn't part of the, I mean, West High's a great project that would do a lot, but the VAC truck issue is a serious issue. We can't get anything done in town, and it wasn't just West High, we were gonna be cleaning with it. It would be obviously the whole town. We have a schedule set up, I'm, I'm, I'm sure it will be adhered to, and it won't just be a emergency, we gotta get out there and jet this or VAC it, it's gonna be a regular yearly thing so that we can follow and track these tiles and see which ones are getting bad with the camera, and say, hey, the roots are really bad here, let's get the, you know, the cutter in there and take them out. And you go to another one you may have done the year before, and you can see how fast it's growing in, and if it's not bad, you don't worry about, you know, root cutting, obviously, and if it's clear and nothing's belling up, you don't worry about jetting it, it's, you move on to the next one. So that was the whole point of that, was to start a maintenance program that was adhered to basically seven months out of the year. You know, March through October.
EPA used to let you send chemicals through those tiles to kill the root. Copper sulfate and a couple other different things, do they still allow it?
Copper sulfate's pretty bad, I would say no. I'd be shocked if they did.
I would have to find out if there was any legal chemicals that you can put, we could put through.
Because it's gonna end up at the plant.
I mean, to me, the way to do it would be just like we did Cornelia Street, you find a bad section, root cut, slip, line it, be done with this brand-new pipe. There's no groundwork.
Except the root will grow back against your liner.
No.
It cost us-
You have to outcut the tree down, too.
When they did the Cornelia Street separation over here, and they, the company came in and finally started doing the slip lining, and it was just impacted with roots, then they sat there for two days and did nothing but cut roots out before they could line it. It was 17 grand, just for that, just for cutting. Lot of money. And these guys-
We have the guys that can do it, they have the skill, they've done it before, they know what they're doing.
I think we have a lot of that in town, and we're just gonna sit there and keep hiring.
Down there in that pipe, it's a greenhouse. It's fresh water every day, kind of fresh.
Fertilized.
It's warm year-round, and you've got to stop the root, you've got to, I'm just a firm believer in exonerating.
Replacing.
Pull it out of there, put some premium joint, uh, plastic in there that is, you're not gonna get a root in it.
Well, one thing's for sure.
You wouldn't have to go as deep again. No, no.
Are you proposing that we don't need, Dan?
A sewer, man?
Uh-huh.
I've said that all along.
Okay.
But did your committee decide, or you didn't really decide?
Well, we talked about the different options, I mean, we kind of said if, if it's something we're gonna use more consistently and use to maintain our system through jetting and cutting and vacuuming, we think we should either definitely buy, like I said, a lease, lease one, I know it costs more throughout the year, but it's less budgeting every year to buy that package.
It's around 50 grand, I think.
Right. He's got 80 in, that can, in your fund right now for the-
There's 80 in that vehicle.
But we also talked about, a lot of the smaller towns can't go out and buy. We're a little bit, well, better off, we have a lot of growth and things happening in the community, but we could maybe also rent out our truck to these cities that do go out and hire these-
That's, that's the next step you asked me to do, is to find out about contracting services.
If they needed to use it for a day to cut some roots out, it would be another revenue stream. Just a thought.
We're, we're-
Like I said, we're just-
We're in the city business, we're not in the, the root cutting business. If you'll remember, we bought a gas-propelled meter.
Valve turner.
Valve turner, to turn open and closed valves. Does anybody know where it's at?
It's here in town, the valve exercises.
Where's it at?
It's down at the garage.
You're sure?
Well, it's at the water plant, but we have possession of it.
Last time I knew, Edgerton still had it.
Well, I'll call him, Ron. I think you're wrong.
Well, and I could be, I'm just saying, the last I knew where that was, because it certainly hasn't been out working, the last time that I seen it, I didn't see it.
Well, that's the problem here, we're talking about maintenance, we need to do more maintenance, and we're not doing it. I'm just, that's, that's a maintenance item right there. I'll shut up now, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking anyway.
But I've been here, well, I've been in town all my life, and just like this, this truck you wanna buy, that was bought 14 years ago, I heard the same thing, I don't know if it was from him, or whoever bought the truck said, we're gonna hit her, that truck's gonna be out every day, it's gonna be work, 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 and I'll bet you if you look and don't turn the hour meter up on me to make me look like a fool, I bet the thing hasn't got four or $500 on it.
I think it is, I would be the-
I don't.
So Mike, what, what is the recommendation of your committee, if you have one to make?
Our recommendation was possibly look at a lease program and our new, new unit. This unit we have now, it will work, but to a certain degree, it's worth 10 grand.
But we don't know when they take that tank off, if that tank has to come off, why are we throwing 50 grand into a unit that's worth maybe 10 grand on a trade? So, they don't know what they're gonna find when they get in there.
But I would be disappointed if we spent that kind of money, or budgeted that kind of money in a lease program if we weren't using it all the time.
Right.
And it's what it's made to use and to help with some of these lines, like you said, if you get to a line that's completely impacted with roots and it's shot, replace it. But if you get to a certain point, and yeah, it's clean this side, it's clean that side, you got a root ball there, get in there and clean it out. You know, if it doesn't need replaced at the time, then-
Right now, I can think of three spots, the Chicago Avenue, the bank, down here, and there was one other one where we, we know there's an issue there, and we can't get through.
Fountain Street.
Fountain Street, yeah.
So-
That's just, you know, that's just small areas.
Where are you gonna get the money?
I'm not. What's in the budget, it's in the budget, I don't know where you want to get more money.
Is it possible on a municipal lease purchase to pay 80,000 down? If that's what's in your budget?
Those numbers, those numbers are right there.
The program they had right now, you don't pay anything for the first year.
There's two choices, there's one choice.
They're talking about paying ahead, but you don't pay anything for the first year, you use it for a year for free, and then it gets, it's four or five years, then the village buys it for a dollar. So it's not like you turn it back in after the lease, at the end of the lease, the villa don't, after, you know, they buy it for a dollar.
Honestly, if we just decide, if the council decides to just fix the old one, at least we've got something running. To just fix the old one, at least we've got something running then for the time being. But then at what cost? And then for how long is it gonna be running? But we need something to get up and get running, cause we're in that, we're approaching that season where we need to be starting to get stuff cleaned up.
If you're gonna order a new one, I mean, they have them on the lot just. How long?
They talked, the people over here last meeting, they said if we would've told them that day, they could've had one two if it was in the middle, mid-April. They were talking about a month lead time. I'm gonna make one more comment and then I'll hook them together. During this whole thing. Did you advertise for bids?
We're not, we're not to that point yet.
Tossing numbers around.
Yeah, we, we just wanna get an idea what kinda cost to give council a more informed decision.
If we're gonna fix the one we have or buy a new one.
Yeah, we haven't even decided if we're gonna fix the old one, Kent.
Or buy a used one. That's where we're at. Right?
I just like to be upfront with them, Kent, so they know the numbers they're looking at before we get to that point.
That's true. Good point.
Lesson learned.
Well, I don't, what's your thoughts? I know what your thoughts are, Ron. I mean, Sheila, Eric, I've listened to Larry, I've listened to Jeff, I've listened to Jim and, and Ron. We've had, we've talked about those last two, three meetings on committee, but what's your thoughts on?
Get what you paid for.
I don't like buying something old.
Right.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna buy an old piece of equipment. I'd rather buy or lease a new one. Uh, all depends on what we can budget. I don't like seeing, you know, four and a half, 5% interest where, you know, over five or six years, you're gonna spend an extra $60,000 in interest. When if you can budget it somehow. Cheryl, work your mind, you have to make sure. Must be able to have it where you're not spending all that extra interest money. That's, I think a new piece of equipment would be the way to go, but I'm only in favor of that if it's something that's gonna be on a routine, regular maintenance schedule. That's gonna be used all the time. I'm not a fan at all of outsourcing or doing other towns. I know you can generate money that way, but I also hate having the equipment down, broke and not fixing your own stuff because it broke as somebody else's, you know, village. I know I had made a comment one time back when we moved in the school about. The village allowing the, the school to pay to have the street sweeper down there to clean up all the mud from the construction and. And the village not wanna run out even though we're village entity, uh, or, you know, taxpayer money. Didn't wanna run it out to us because clean up, and if it breaks down there, we can't sweep the streets. We didn't wanna do that, so. But I think it should buy or lease a new one, but. I don't like the idea of paying all the extra interest if there's a way to. Pay for it out of pocket.
You know, I'm sitting there listening. I've talked to, you know, we have a, uh, even the police department, the fire department, they have a revolving. Equipment and or.
Contingency.
Contingency plan for their vehicles. And you talk to each of these departments and we're doing okay. I mean, we're spending money, yes, but that's what we're here to do, but spend it wisely. And these guys are going three, four, or five years past when they were supposed to get a newer vehicle. You know, same thing with these fire apparatuses we got there. Listen to those guys. They're way past their, their limits on when they were supposed to be replaced or upgraded and different things. And we have that in all of our departments. None of this equipment lasts forever, none of it. And we have to use it, we use it. Um, and we have it. But I think with what we're doing to our infrastructure with taking a lot of the stormwater out and. It's a gravity feed system, it needs water. And it needs freshwater in there to move the solids through it. We're getting to a point where some of this infrastructure, even if it's new and or old, pulling that stormwater out of it because it's EPA mandated. It doesn't move that solid through there like it should all the time. Um, having these types of equipment out there to help flush those systems and those lines and, you know, we've bought, we bought an extra push camera this year to help with some of the lateral issues. And the smaller lines, I think that's why it's investment. I hope they're using them. And I hope they're using the cameras and I hope they use the new equipment when it's finally purchased. But we get to a certain point, this stuff needs replaced. It just can't be bought on, you know, used equipment.
Well, yeah, I said I was gonna shut up, but you gotta remember on the contingency for a vehicle. Once you shoot that or spend it, it's gone. It took me how many years to get that fund built up to where it's at? And it's there to use. I'm not arguing with that, but next year you're gonna be starting at zero. So it's not like you got 80,000 every year to be making that payment.
Well, yeah.
That's where you'll have to ask Cheryl how much money the fund can, with the new debt payments you have, how much more you can be spending for leasing or whatever option you go with. That's what scares me when people see contingency money. Oh, yeah, that's a one-time deal until you get it built back up. I agree, we need a vac truck. I mean, I, no. There's enough catch basins, they're not gonna be able to hand-dip them all. Just, just for that fact alone, they come in handy. I think the guy's used it quite a bit. Probably could've been used a lot more, maybe can't argue with that fact at all. Same with the different cameras we bought, if they're operable still, they come in very handy. If your dilapidable camera doesn't work, you know, brand new, so I'm kinda puzzled by that one.
Well, it works. The push camera?
Sometimes, well, I had to have the cable replaced at one time and it's.
Oh, yeah, it works again. You're right, though. The cable, the cable broke. Cable broke, but it was under warranty, fortunately.
No, some of that stuff does come in handy. I don't think a vac truck's a waste.
She said, what did you say about it?
Okay, what you paid for?
I'd have ended up a lot of money in an old one and then used it for a month or two and then have.
I'm not even sure if it'll.
Right. No guarantees.
Well, um.
I do like, I do like the idea about the one where, you know, waiting here and get the piece of equipment up front and then. Kinda budget for the future and carry over contingency money to the following year.
I mean, we can still have Jim check around with more options.
He could put it up for bids.
Doesn't mean we have to do anything.
You just reject them all and move on down the road.
Well, it'd be for financing and not financing, I mean, how will you bid it out for?
We could do both.
Are there different sizes of back trucks?
Yes.
And.
Gallons per minute's a big, big ordeal.
And what gallons per minute are we looking for? Cause I was looking for that on the paper.
What do we have now?
25, is it?
35.
35?
Need a minimum of 50.
Yeah.
You'd be blowing water into everybody's bathroom.
No, if there's roots in the way.
I mean, you can jet with less, but you need 50 to run, you need a minimum of 50 to run the root cutter.
And then are there attachments to stuff like blades and stuff that cut roots too?
Depends on, depends on the type of root cutter that you get. There's different blades you can get.
Will we need to include the cost of the blades and stuff we need with the bid?
We'll have to look at the root cutter that we have, but the root cutter we have now, we might just have to buy a different four, five, three, four.
Fair cobbler, if you're, if you're thinking a new truck, get the new parts.
I agree, I agree.
Don't.
One of them was 74.
Bring something from a 94 truck, put it on a new one.
One of them was 74, $50.
I'd like to see bids, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
For, for both, you know, one upfront cost, financing.
Oh, well, make sure we get bids, absolutely.
Well, I make a motion that we take a look at any bids for either buying it outright new and or a lease program for a back truck.
Is it, uh. I know a lot of times we'd say, why didn't you do this section or why didn't you do that section and you said. That the head was too big or something, it wouldn't go in that sewer. Now, are we buying such a truck now that it ain't gonna fit into nobody sewer?
You would have, I mean. The way I understand on the, the jet we have now, they sized the tips for a hopeful. To get a new, a new truck. So the, the tips we have now technically aren't ready for the size that we have now. So we, tips will probably be a different, you know, would be added into the price, I would think, for the jet, for different sizes of, of line.
But it'll be downsized enough. The length and girth of this head will be enough that you can get it into the pipes where we couldn't get the current one in.
There should, there should be different sized tips for different sized lines.
Yeah.
Yes.
As far as jetting goes.
Not should, there will be.
There will be.
And I am.
Backside, that's the key on the backside.
I have a motion.
So we have a motion on the table to allow them to take bids with financing and without financing terms. And we have a second by Ron Jones. A little call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to getting prices.
Barth?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm done now.
You're on, you're on your part?
All right. Let's go on to the administrator's report, then unless any other committees of council have a report. Okay, administrator, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Done.
Um, well, that was kind of everything we covered for the week. Uh, wait a minute, I got something here. Wanted to start back up at the top. Um. We're finding a lot of potholes. We've got our coal patch in. Um, they're starting to fill some of those potholes you may have seen already. Um, as far as the schedule of work goes, we have an issue on Bunnell Street we would like to look at. Putting a catch basin in on the west side of Bunnell to assist the existing standpipe. That's trying to relieve water there, but when it's really raining, it doesn't relieve the water there. And it just becomes a giant trench. Um, plus attempt to build that up a little and use the grindings we have so the road doesn't keep falling away. Until a permanent fix can be, can be found, so, uh.
You, you wouldn't consider a curb there?
We, we would, absolutely.
I mean, that's what, that's what. We talked about that, the street meeting, the street and property meeting.
Right, because I own property on that street. I've washed that corner. Different ones have, in fact, I, I did it for Lord of Cure once. I dressed that bank all up and. And I think it was the second day we had rain. And of course, more semis run it then than they do now, but. Yeah, whole set of tannins grow over in your yard. It's that way right now.
I get complaints about that.
Yeah, it just, it needs a curb there.
I would, uh, I would entertain getting bids then for the curving work, but I believe we can do the, the rest of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, it's not a, a big, big operation. But I remember we talked about that at the street property and sidewalk committee before. Um. Well, we talked about the roots and they.
Jim? On that sewer on Bunnell, you tighten into that storm sewer, our backhoe won't reach down to that storm sewer. That's why we had to have contracted out because we couldn't, we, our backhoe won't dig down that far. To that catch base or to that storm sewer.
Where's the nearest, uh.
There's a catch basin. There's a storm sewer right on near that yard.
Yeah.
That's that big storm sewer that runs out the triadent. And our, our backhoe won't reach down far enough unless you're.
Just seems like we need another catch basin right there.
There's one right there to almost get to the road.
Yeah, but it's not back towards, this is about almost halfway between the road and the alley.
It's got that little standpipe going through there. If you keep, keep the trucks out of it, I don't, I mean, our backhoe, you know, in order for you, what you said, us doing it ourselves, our backhoe, backhoe won't reach.
It won't go that deep.
You can't dig down to the top of that?
I don't think so, cause we had to have.
12?
Oh, why was I, there again, I gotta talk, cause I was around.
It's 12 feet, right?
They can barely scratch the top of it. That's why you had to have Lynn by you a couple times. Oh, I didn't think that was that deep when it came by my building. Well, we had to get down to the very bottom, but there was a stretch, you'd have to double-check with the guy.
Yeah, getting to the bottom might be different, but I mean, you'd wanna top-tap it anyhow.
Get to that top.
I know it was, I know it was pushing, but like I said, maybe after we were trying to get down to the bottom, find out where we were. What was causing the suckhole.
Well, if we can get to the top, then, yeah, we could top-tap it and we'll, we'll take care of it. If not. I don't know why we'd have to be on the bottom anyway.
No, you wouldn't wanna be on the bottom.
No, you don't have to be a top-tap, but I, I was just wanting to bring in, you know.
Okay.
We have to do it.
Well, thank you.
Say, you know, we can do it ourselves if we have to double-check on the desk and.
But if you curb it, you're gonna need a catch basin?
Catch, a curved catch basin would be the ideal ticket.
Something that's inset even, maybe inset and along.
You might need a couple bobbers to keep the truck, cause I know a couple semis use it all the time.
And that's.
Curb's gonna be busted out and your back does the same problem.
And Kent, you're absolutely right. And then the, there at, uh, the marathon in that house, there's a giant hole where it's all washed out and there. You can see the concrete there. It's a, that's a jawbreaker.
Is that my flower bed?
I don't know.
The other side, over to Jackler's house.
Yeah, so we're gonna be filling that in because I called ODOT and they're not, they, of course, are on this thing about not doing anything anymore downtown. So we're gonna have to get that filled up, but, uh.
Jim, where do they start and stop ODOT? I'm a little confused and I've had a couple people.
It's funny because that little snow we got not too long ago, I watched them right at the Catholic church. They came to the church. He picked up his blade and went on into town, went through town.
So it's from the Catholic church all the way to where?
To, uh.
Ice cream shop? Well, Marathon.
And then they'll, they'll put their blade down as they go out 18.
So any new paving, we have to pay for it in downtown.
That is, that is gonna be a source of contention because. I can share the email with everyone about what Patrick Dilly said, and he's the head of this area. Um, they wanna work with us, just like the county does. But a lot of it's gonna be the timing of when they plan on doing things. So it's pertinent that we know their schedule well ahead of time so that we can find money to get on their schedule and do things together.
We've always known their schedule a few years ahead.
Yeah. So, and he said they're, they're, they're still willing to work with us.
But they're still paving through town.
Not through town.
Not through town.
No.
No.
I thought when I asked you about that, I asked specifically, are they paving through town? And I found out that they are.
Uh, I don't, that email was so convoluted anyway, but. The area from Main Street. Out to Musargan was not going to be paved, not in this next project. This year.
It's not on the schedule for that time.
Right.
They do different sections every so often.
He kinda made it sound like they're not gonna do the downtown anymore.
I thought I got an email from you that said that there'd been a misunderstanding and that.
I thought it did too.
That's, that's where I was saying that he's willing to work with us. Um, I, I'll share the email with everyone again so we're clear. So you get it from him and not second party, but, uh, it was, um. It had something to do with the State Highway Improvement Fund. Those funds are supposed to be way up, almost double what they were. So if their money's coming back to us, we're supposed to be using it for that purpose.
Okay, well, it's a little different.
But, you know, $50,000 doesn't, doesn't do all of that. That's the widest section of our right-of-way in town. It's right downtown, so.
I was just curious.
And, and, yeah, it stopped at, uh, St. Michael's right there. Then they picked up Route 2 out to State Line. And they picked up me from Musargan out to State Line that way.
Just do it all like they have been.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
You have more report, Jim?
Um. Clearview and Haber Drive, Mike, did you want to mention anything about that?
Yeah, I didn't mention that either. That's what the Underground Utilities wanting to, wanting that additional $33,000.
Then they dropped it to 14.
Well, now they're 14, but he's been working with Colin, Ken Kearns and. Um, yeah, they dropped it to 14 and we don't want to pay. We think it's ridiculous. It's this far out after the project. We think. Disposition between the engineer and Underground Utilities. And to send it to us this late after the project's done is ridiculous.
I think that council should vote on that to make it an official record that none of us want any part of paying them nothing more than what we already have. And I would make that motion that we do not pay them $14,000. We do not pay them another dime.
Right.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. The only other thing was that I gotta get with Troy on the Chicago Avenue Waterline for legislation to enter into a contract with Pogemar Design Group.[1763.81]
Yeah, just give me whatever.
All right.
Jeff?
Oh, did Underground ever reimburse the village for the damage they did to?
$8,000?
For that water pit and everything, leakage and everything?
Did that, Cheryl?
No.
Nope.
No.
The water pit.
Yeah, Jerome and Jerome's yard there. They did that, they hooked something up wrong, and that's the one Troy and Jesse had to fix because they never put the meter in right. And it was just blowing right out the bottom, and they wasted how many gallons?
300 and some.
700,000 gallon.
So, that was before my time, you were, yeah.
Yeah, I had a note pinned up on the board. They signed for their certified letter when I sent them the bill. So, yeah, they owe us money if anybody wants to follow up on that.
8,000 gallons equals about 14 grand, right?
I don't remember what the amount was. It was 70,000, I don't know. But I know they do owe us something.
Will you follow up on that, Jim?
I sure will.
Get our money, period?
Since we're refusing, I'll say something to Troy, needs to follow up on some records if they decide to go to litigation against us, that.
Put the ball in their court.
Yep.
Tell them we're not gonna pay. They wanna have their lawyer send us a letter or something like that, and we can respond accordingly.
Thank you for bringing that up, Kent and Jeff.
And I know you want to talk about, since we're out that direction, the street lights for Haver.
Correct. I had a conversation with AEP today, the, the new guy that's in charge of the project. And they wanted, they can get started anytime. And I, he asked why it wasn't done in the winter, and he said there was a change in hands. One guy went to joint use, which is pole attachment agreements. The guy that was in charge of it, and he was the one that actually told me, I thought that project was done. And I said, no, there's three poles up, it's not done, and people want to know what's going on. Well, the guy then that was in charge of it said that he was waiting because of the soil is so soft, he doesn't want to tear it all up and cause, he, he thought between 10, 10, around 10 grand in, um, charges and fees to go back and, you know, replace and repair and make it like new again, as far as all the yards. Because they have to take a trench wherever there's a light and take it back behind the backlot. And you've seen this, a couple of them already there. And I said, well, I don't know, we've got a lot of people that are really concerned and, you know, they want it done. And he said, well, we can do it, just let me know if you're gonna pay the money or not. So, let's go back, that was a non-perform by, from reading my notes. Because the guys that did the swell, that company that did the sewer work, they were so far behind or something, they were told that to non-perform on the lights. So, AEP got the lights and the village got a big credit off the bill, 16, 17,000 or something like that. And, um, when that, um, when AEP decided to take it back, then they're doing it at their cost. They're replacing the wire and the poles. So, there's no cost to the village. But what he's saying now is if we want it done now with the ground so soft, all the damage they do to the properties will be, they will expect us to pay for it or fix it.
So, we won't get lights until?
It dries up.
Nice drive around August Day.
Till next winter.
Well, that's the reason for the delay. I know people are wanting to know.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot about it, and it all happened today, so.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, just would request an executive session or someone for land acquisition possibly and personnel.
Okay, we'll hold that off till the end of the meeting, yes.
All right.
Let's see here. See what else I have thrown in the package here.
We'll go on to the solicitors' report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2018-02, second reading by caption only. An ordinance adopting section 925.09 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to set forth rules and regulations for the continued and future use of the water and wastewater facilities by properties outside of territorial limits of the Village of Hicksville. And then the second reading, and I think Cheryl swapped out on the desk. We had the heading in the last time, it hadn't been switched out properly. So, this is the proper one that was on the desk tonight. Ordinance 2018-03, a second reading by caption only. An ordinance adopting section 903.02 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to regulate excavations in the right-of-way. And Cheryl, before we do this last one, Eric pointed out to me, I don't know if you saw it with you, in both section one and section two of the ordinance 2018-04, the numbers, the words differ from the numbers in the parentheses.
Oops.
So, we don't know which one is which, but ordinance 2018-04, first reading by caption only, an ordinance authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer funds.
That's interesting, because I just read the 500,000 today and looked at the dollar amount. And I even asked her, I said, well, usually I always transferred 400,000, and you're transferring 500,000. And you meant it to be 500,000.
Adding Eric Cottidy to attention this morning.
Good job, Eric.
He's reading this stuff.
I've got a question. This is just a street curb, there's nothing in the right-of-way, the grass, right? Is that what that means?
As long as it's in the right-of-way.
Anything that's dug in the right-of-way.
Even in the grass?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's okay.
Yep.
Because at the top, it says curb and wrote exclamation, I'm just curious of that. And then some of your companies, like your, say, your gas company, they just do a blanket, or they pay every time?
A blanket can be created, yeah, where they just pay one time for the whole year.
Okay.
It's not about the money.
Yeah, it's just to make sure it's taken.
Yeah.
Taken care of it afterwards.
Right.
Thanks.
Can I? Go ahead. I was just gonna say, I think I need an update on an economic development issue that can be done in executive session.
Like on a sewer system in the country, you have to be licensed and bonded and all that stuff through the county, whichever county you're in. Unless you're the homeowner. If you're the homeowner, you can do your own. Are we allowing that to happen in this digging in the right-of-way proposal?
Says no person. I mean, it's no person. Other than an employee of the village, so we can dig in our own right-of-way.
Well, I mean, if I had to dig my sewer, if I would want to do my own.
Yeah.
I would really come on to it, but I would.
Okay.
Okay.
Good question though.
So, you're done, Troy?
Yes.
All right. So, we will go to the department heads, and we'll see you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I mean, well, no, this is serious. As of, because my front yard's gonna get torn up sometime this spring. So, I gotta get $10 permit to redo my yard?
No, that can be waived.
In my right-of-way?
It doesn't have to be any fee at all, that can be waived.
Well, I could, I, I didn't know, I wasn't paying attention when you were at the head.
Oh.
I just wanted to make sure.
Who's tearing it up?
Well, contractor will.
Well, he'll fix it. That's, that's his job.
Well, no, I just didn't know that applied to the $10.
No, this applies to the contractor, so that if he comes in and tears up your lateral, say, Kent, and then bolts town, we have nothing right now trying to hold him to anything, nothing on paper. He could go and fold up or move to Kukamunga or whatever. And you're off, you're, you're, you know, you're on the, on the hook and the towns, you know, you're mad at the town or whatever for allowing them to come into town, or. This was really just to protect the villagers from shoddy contract practices.
So, Sergeant, are you going to give us a report for, uh, in place of the police chief? If you would, would you come to the microphone, please?
Sure. I don't have a whole lot, I didn't really prepare anything. Just wanted to say that Officer Maynard, our newest tire, has been working out pretty well. He's been doing a pretty good job for us. We talked about it earlier today. We're pretty close, I wanted to get with you, Troy, about it. The state of Ohio is gonna require us in 2020 to be certified as far as policies and procedures go. And I've almost got all of that done right now, so we'd be done quite early with it. But there's a few of them that I'd like to go over with you.
No problem.
As far as that goes. And, um, we've been getting a lot of OVIs lately, and I would really like to have that stop. We're getting at least one or two a week in the village, and that's obviously a problem.
Are they locals?
A lot of them have been locals. The one we had on Tuesday was a guy, was a gentleman from Fort Wayne, but, um, yeah, it's unfortunate that we're having so many. We're on pace for over 50 OVIs this year, and that's, that's a problem, so that's really all I had.
Does anyone have any questions for Sergeant Doctor?
The only other thing I had for police chief, Chief Stickney, request a PFE meeting sometime before the next council meeting, so. Talk about that.
Thank you for coming to the meeting and giving the report. We'll go on to the fire chief.
I don't have a whole lot today. I do have a question for Troy on our old turnout gear that's no longer serviceable. How are we gonna, is there a way we would be able to take that and make other items out of it, such as bags and such?
For what purpose, I guess?
Well, either for our own purpose or for, like, a fundraiser issue?
Probably in order to do that, it'd have to have it declared that it was obsolete and no longer used for its regular purpose. And then I think under those rules, I'd have to check it, but I think under those rules, then you could do other things with it. I think that's in the past, we've donated some things to other, you know, like entities and stuff, and that's how we did it, is have it declared that it was obsolete, assuming that it is, I mean.
Well, yeah, it is, it is obsolete, it's outdated.
No longer needed and it's outdated, and you probably, probably could do it then. But it takes some, you know, formal, you know, vote or something and a certain number of, however you describe it, so that we could make sure we had the auditors happy as to what we were doing with the village property.
Okay, so I just get a set number?
You just ask them to bring legislation.
What is refreshment, what's turnout gear?
Our old turnout gear, they, they make like handbags and different stuff with it. We use the reflector.
It's real trendy.
Their pants in their jacket.
Yeah.
Heavy rubber.
Yeah, Bear Bradley stuff.
Like a ladder truck.
We've got a, we've got a seamstress that'll do some of the, some of the stuff for us.
Send the turnout gear to, like, Brazil or something?
Yeah, we donate something, yeah.
Where there's no EPA or fire law.
Yeah, or that's a whole lot better than a T-shirt.
Only if the fire chief carries one of the.
You say you have some.
I can do that.
You have someone that's willing to do that for you?
Yeah, we have a seamstress that'll make the stuff for us.
You know, it's a lot of sentimental value too. Yeah, uh-huh.
Right.
A lot of that was after 9/11 with stuff and.
Carrie Purse.
Doesn't want to have to buy one.
Well, I guess you just need to ask him to bring legislation for this stuff.
So, what do you need to know to bring legislation?
Oh, what exactly we're talking about is, I mean, the legislation itself won't be as much as having like an exhibit to attach to it to say it's.
Quantities.
How many a quantity would you hear?
16 jackets, 14 pair of pants, whatever.
Okay. I'll get some numbers together for that.
Okay.
Um, I was here for the last meeting, and Deputy Chief Hart did thank everybody for coming to the breakfast, I, I hope anyhow.
Sounds good.
He did.
And I'd like to thank everybody that attended the banquet that night. I'd like to say we had a good time.
Thank you for the invite. It was very nice.
We do have a function coming up May 12th as a reverse drawing. See you, any firemen, if you'd like tickets.
While I'm thinking about it, I would like to congratulate your Fireman of the Year that is in the room with us, Bruce Silkot.
I'm not Fireman of the Year.
EMT.
Oh, EMT of the Year, okay, all right. Well, congratulations as EMT of the Year.
Lee Whitman got fired.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Other than that, questions for me?
No questions. Except, were you gonna recommend a person tonight?
Oh, that's right. I didn't have it on my list.
I thought maybe you changed your mind and you were not gonna recommend him, and I hated to say anything.
I'd like a recommendation for the mayor for Tyler, I'm drawing a mic now.
Tyler Blair?
Tyler Blair, that's it, to be put on the fire department. Pending physical drug screen and background check, fingerprints. Local fellow.
Young fellow?
Young fellow, mid-20s.
I coached him in wrestling in Edgerton.
So, he is from Edgerton?
Fight fires.
Well, I would make a recommendation that we, um, put Tyler Blair on the fire department, pending good physical drug screen, training, background check, everything you need.
I'll make the mayor's, ask for the mayor's recommendation for Tyler Blair to be on the fireman.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Barth?
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks for reminding me, Mayor.
All right, we will go on to the EMT of the Year. Drum roll, Bruce Silkot, chief report.
Before the meeting tonight, I handed out a little three-page report for everybody. As of March 31st, the rescue squad has responded to 123 incidents. That equates to about 1.4 average per day. Over the course of the next 365 days, that would put us at 511 runs for the year, which would be quite the increase. Compared to last year, we are up 24%. So, and I did put down some, a breakdown of, of the incidents. I've also put down the collections from the year. On the second page is the types of insurance and the locations, where the zones are, and some notes there. The third page is actually the collections report, and you can take a look at that. If any of you have any questions on this, please feel free to contact me at the station. I'm there from usually 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning till about 4:00 in the afternoon, sometimes even later, depends on if I have to talk with Cheryl or not.
Any questions? Thank you, looks good. All right, and I did not see anyone from the park here.
Mr. Meiser had a baseball game, he was supposed to, it was his turn to come.
Oh.
So, he's the baseball coach, we don't want to be here.
All right, did he give you a report?
Nope, he said the mayor was at the last meeting, so if there's any questions.
Oh, okay. So, we will go on to the fiscal officers' report, please.
Yes, I have to apologize for it. The cash report is missing. I was balancing the month today, and I got it balanced and I forgot to put it in, oops.
That's okay as long as the cash isn't missing.
Cash is good. And I did not have listed the utility or the income tax report because they weren't sure they would get it done in time, but they did, so they are both in there for the month of March.
Well, the income tax report is looking very good. I like the looks of it.
And the last thing I have is I spent two days at the local government officials' conference. And the classes that I took were for records retention, new legislation for credit cards, investment tips, internal controls, financial policies, ethics, motions, resolutions and ordinances, and fundamentals of debt. That was my agenda, and it was really interesting. So, some of these things will have to put in our personnel manual, make some updates and changes to that. We've already talked to Troy about some of them, and when they're ready, we'll bring them up. That's all I have.
Great. Is that the same one that you and you, James?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you enjoy your classes?
I did, yeah, learned a lot. I did not take the fundamentals of debt.
She's gonna send you to it next time.
There you go.
All right, is that it, Cheryl?
That's for me.
All right. Well, I have a few things here I collected this morning, whenever, but, you know, I'm just mentioning this because I was asked to take it to council. All right, well, I have a few things here I collected this morning, whenever, but, you know, I'm just mentioning this because I was asked to take it to council. It came through email, and it says, please place this proposed ordinance before the Hicksville Village Council, and it's proposed legislation for so-called baby boxes. And, um, evidently, there's some being installed that are not FDA regulatory compliant, medical device, um, they do not exceed, they do not exceed the consumer product safety meter, exceed the Product Safety Commission regulations, and this and that. And this, this person followed it up with a phone call to me today, and, you know, just went on and on and on about it, and I said, well, you know, we're not putting in a baby box. I mean, I've not heard anything about that, has anybody else?
They're putting one at the hospital.
The hospitals mentioned that they were planning on putting one in.
And that's what I thought in the back of my mind, so I gave him Michelle Wagner's telephone number and email address at the hospital. So, I'm gonna just pass this over to Troy, and I guess there's nice to have regulations if a baby box is gonna be placed in town, but I...
I hope the hospital would be, if anybody was doing it, complying with FDA regulations and whatever the...
So he was like from Coral East, he told me a story about the first baby box put in was in the Fire Department, and the exhaust pipe from the biggest fire truck they had, just every time they started the truck, I blew in the baby box and stuff, and it was... He's just a, you know, concerned person about safe baby boxes, so, and then I got a letter from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Citizen Advisory Public Interest Center. I don't know if, you know, "A request to grant a temporary variance from the mercury limits allowed in the metal management Ohio wastewater discharge permit will be the topic of an April eleventh, two thousand eighteen Ohio EPA public meeting. An information session will begin at six PM immediately following a public hearing at the Community Auditorium, Old Middle School in Defiance. Ohio EPA is reviewing an application from the metal fabrication company located at twenty-seven zero six-three State Route two eighty-one in Defiance to modify its current discharge permit to temporarily grant a variance from the one point three parts per trillion monthly average mercury limit. Therefore, prove the change would allow the facility to continue to discharge mercury into the Maumee River at current levels which exceed the one point three part per trillion requirement of the current permit. As conditions of the variance, the facility would be required to identify the sources of mercury and take steps to eliminate or minimize those sources. The proposed variance may result in a change from current water quality conditions, but does not authorize any violation of the Ohio Water's quality standards that protect human health and the environment. The Ohio EPA will consider technical, economic, social, and environmental aspects of the proposal before deciding whether to approve or deny the permit change." So, um, comments on the proposed permit modification may be presented at the hearing or submitted in writing to the Ohio EPA Division of Surface Water at Columbus. And, uh, there's an email address and stuff here, I'm going to give this to the village administrator, or post it on the bulletin board out front in case people want to write a letter or attend the hearing. Again, that's April eleventh, um, at the Community Auditorium of the Old Middle School in Defiance, so I'll pass that around.
So if they think the, uh, the carp with three eyes in the river's not enough, they want them to glow too, that'd be good.
Or kill them. So then, uh, the Defiance County Economic Development is, uh, it's time to have their tax incentive review, we passed legislation, and it says, you know, we're authorized to appoint two representatives to the meeting. Uh, last year, we appointed Mike Bailey and Cheryl Smith, um, Cheryl can't go this year, it's actually on a council meeting night, Monday, the sixteenth of April. So I don't know, those of you who have been there, do we really need two people there? Could I have Mike go by, Mike can go that night, but can he be by himself, or do we need two representatives?
I don't think you need two, but legally, do you have to? I've been there.
It just says we can appoint two, I don't know that it says we have to.
It says we're authorized to appoint two, but I just put Mike's...
See a reason why you'd have to have to.
I think he can go by himself.
Since, um, I mean, since we have the resolution, I can, we can put Cheryl and Mike's name on this paper, but just, just Mike go, okay. All right, um, today I met with Mike J., he is, uh, with the Regional Growth Partnership Director of Strategic Networks. And he, he came to town, you know, to meet me and stuff, he, he's, you know, works closely with the Defiance County Economic Development Office to help us, um, and they helped APT. And, uh, you know, they're looking to help another business in town with expansions and stuff, and they're just another contact to help our business and industry grow in Hicksville, and it was... I first met him at a mayor's and manager's meeting last year, but it was nice for him to come and see Hicksville, very impressed by our downtown, we always get compliments on it, and, uh, and our businesses and stuff, so... We had lunch at Casa Grande, and while, you know, we were there, we, you know, discussed some other places in town, and he said that he would be back so that he can, uh, do more things. He's very interested in hearing about, um, the STMA plans, which there is a meeting for that here in the council room. If any of you want to come, it's at ten o'clock Thursday, and, uh, they're kinda gonna tell us what they're working on here, what their future plans are, it sounds pretty impressive. You know, I think I told you guys I'm working on trying to get a community concert series in town, downtown during the summertime every two weeks, so those plans are moving along, I've got a group of guys that are... Are you playing, Larry, you gonna play?
Not sure yet.
All right, we're trying to get all our local...
Bad weekends.
Okay, we're trying to get our local talent here.
We're, I've been talking with Tony Slatter, we're trying to get something going.
Uh, on the Huber Deck, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, uh, depending on how the schedule works every two weeks, and I thought I told you guys about it, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if you got any prob, if you have any problem with it or anything, you know, let me know. We have a meeting here Wednesday, uh, about five thirty, I think, if you want to come and listen. So, does anybody have anything else? Nope.
I would move to go into executive session to discuss, uh, possible land purchase and two rounds of personnel.
And economic development.
And economic development.
I think you have to specify two rounds of personnel.
Oh, yes, two rounds. You know...
Personnel is personnel.
I heard that the community Easter egg hunt was wonderful, and wonderful prizes and bikes, and, and I really want to thank the Wans and the Boy Scouts and everybody that helped with that project, because that is great that they brought an Easter egg hunt back to Hicksville after its absence for a while, and thank you so much. And if any of our residents out there have any other ideas that they would like to volunteer to set up and do, we would appreciate it, thank you. So, we have a first for, and did we get a second for executive session?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly? Oh, Jones?
Yes.
Okay.